Your plan is disappearing. And even though it just happened to, uh, 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 you know, it just kind of puts... Hmm. I would say now we're...
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll call the meeting after work. We have a word of prayer first for President Lucas. God have a gracious Father, thank you all for this wonderful day that you've given us to enjoy. Thank you for any blessings of life you've bestowed upon each individual and the family representing this room tonight. God, we pray for traveling safety for Commissioner Hughes as she comes back in from Washington DC. Pray for Commissioner Rigg and God as he's sick, please pray you would touch his body and heal him. And Lord, we just ask you give us wisdom tonight, discernment, and let us make the best decisions for our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a lot of visitors in our audience tonight, which is good. Welcome our city council partners, uh, actually City Manager Emily Beeman, Ricky Hawke, and Perry Lawrence. Thank y'all for coming. We have Chairman DeCaw from County Mission, Captain Willis, and I, Denver Rattler. Good to have you all here today. All right, we have anyone in the audience that'd like to come speak to us for five minutes, more or less? All right, see you then.
Yes.
Not on any topic?
Yes.
If it's on a topic that's on the agenda, if you're here to talk about the zoning matter, and they'll be in the public hearing when you have to speak about that. So if you want to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, you can come up and now talk about it.
Okay?
Sorry.
Anyone? All right. All right, we do have one appointment that made to speak with us tonight. We have Michael Stubbs with us to come talk to us about landfill options that we, uh, decision we have to make. You want to take them over?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stubbs, who is an engineer, has worked with us now for fifteen, sixteen years on the landfill, Michael. And, uh, and we have had some preliminary discussions, you know, that our current line, the line portion of our landfill is approaching, uh, its end of life. And what Michael's here to do is kind of discuss what that means, what the timeframe is, and what are, you know, some of our options are. Michael, yes, sir.
So again, Michael Stubbs, uh, registered engineer, been practicing for, I think, twenty-six, twenty-seven years. Mainly solid waste over the country, primarily southeast in the US, and been working with Ricky and Jim and these guys here for ten or fifteen years going forward. So my job tonight is just kind of tell you the lay of land, um, and what's going on with landfill, and kind of some decisions that are gonna need to be made one way or the other, um, and what they might look like. So in the landfill business, um, your facility has a thirty-acre line footprint. So that's thirty acres where we're storing waste, overlaying it, all right? That's on one hand. On the other hand, you have an unlined unit that's pre-1993. That's the way we store waste in our country, pre-1993, an unlined unit, and they're separated by ditch, all right? The thirty-acre line units where we've been storing waste for the last twenty-some odd years, and that facility's doing fine, but it's built out. Your permit issued through EPD and all the other federal agencies, um, have limits what we call a footprint. All right, so that thirty acres is built out, and if you just imagine filling up a thirty-acre, um, bowl, that's what you're doing. You're filling up a thirty-acre bowl. Um, obviously, some prosperity and some growth here, and our tonnage that's going in that facility is roughly about two hundred tons a day. And so if you think about it this way, it's a bowl, you're filling it up, it's got a set capacity, and that capacity is only affected by two things. I mean, the tons we put in, how tight we pack it, all right? So based on the current tightness that we're packing it and the tons coming in, we've got roughly about four years before that permitted footprint is full. Um, so right now, you're operating it, you're doing fine, you're filling above ground. Obviously, the taller you get, the more expensive it gets to fill, so the operating expenses are kind of creeping up a little bit. That's all normal, that's gonna happen. But what's gonna happen in four years? All right, so in four years, and that's what I'll call just kind of the keep going like we're going option. If you do nothing, what's gonna happen is in four years, that landfill's gonna reach capacity. It's full, nothing else to do. And what we essentially do in the landfill business and the permit holder, um, which is in Pitt County, um, you've got to close that landfill. You've got to put the same liner system on top that you got on bottom. You button it up, you seal it up, you collect the gas from it, you grow grass on top of it, and that's gonna, about thirty acres of that, just for round numbers, it's gonna cost about two hundred thousand dollars an acre to close. So just roughly six million bucks, and of course, things don't get cheaper in this world, so in four years, I would imagine it would be more expensive. But you're gonna button it up and you're gonna close that landfill. Um, then you're gonna enter something called post-closure. The state of Georgia, in fact, every state in this country, requires a minimum thirty-year post-closure period. So the next thirty years after y'all buttoned up, you're gonna be monitoring that landfill, making sure nothing's going on, making sure that it is being maintained in post-closure. So that's the do-nothing option. Now, when that happens, you've got roughly two hundred tons today in this community that has to find a place to go, right? It's still gotta go somewhere. And so if you pick the let's-do-nothing option, you're not just gonna close in a post-closure, you're also gonna have to go ahead and find a place for that waste to go. The most logical method to do that is what we would call transfer station. You would permit and construct a transfer station. All your small vehicles that collect the waste in the community are gonna go to that transfer station. They're gonna dump their waste on a concrete floor, they're gonna load it into a transfer trailer, and it's gonna go to another landfill, all right? That other landfill's gonna be owned by somebody else, that other landfill is gonna have a set rate for disposal, and you're now having a contract with whatever landfill or landfills to take that waste going forward. So you lose some autonomy of not being able to control your own set tip fee, but you're closing up your landfill and you're not continuing to expand the existing one. So that's the kind of, just let's just close what we got and move on with life type thing. But you will have a transfer station, um, you know, probably gonna be a million and a half dollars to build one of these, um, and then you're gonna enter that post-closure period. You should have money set aside for closure and post-closure, that city in a bank account, and that money is obligated for that purpose, but that's the way that goes. Now, the other two options are generally the same option, one's smaller and one's bigger, all right? So I'm gonna pick on the smaller option. The smaller option is we need to go ahead, we want to stay in the landfill business, let's say, and we want to expand our landfill, all right? So you're gonna go through a permit process where you do a whole bunch of engineering studies and make sure that the land is suitable for development, and you're gonna permit what I'll call a small expansion. Let's just call it a ten or fifteen-acre footprint, that's in addition to your thirty. You're gonna get it permitted, you're gonna build it, and that's big money when you start building it. You're gonna be in the four, five hundred thousand dollar an acre range, so ten times four, five hundred, you're four or five million bucks to build it. But you stay in the landfill business, and you have another eight to ten years, maybe in that fifteen-acre sale for the purposes of storing waste and proper disposal of it in accordance with these regulations, all right? That permitting effort is gonna take time. And so one of the reasons I'm here tonight is that, not tonight, but we really need to make a decision if that's something the community's interested in doing, you gotta make that decision here pretty quick. Let's just say sometime between the end of the first quarter and the beginning of the second quarter in that April-June timeframe type, something like that. That's reasonable, but if you wait much longer than that, what is likely gonna happen is none of us control the regulatory environment in which we're trying to seek a permit. It will take at least a year to get all the studies together. It'll take at least another year, year and a half, to obtain those permits, and at least another year to build. A year plus a year and a half plus years, three and a half years, four years, and we have to have the sale built. Otherwise, the same thing happens, right? We're, I have places to put waste, and we gotta move forward. Order of magnitude, you know, those permitting activities, and it's done in phases. It's not all-in upfront, you don't have to go all-in, but you do have to start making those decisions at any point in the process. You may find out that that expansion is not viable. There may be some technical reason that the groundwater's too high, or a different myriad of reasons that for some reason you may just say, I wanna expand, but I can't, I just can't do it, can't go, and then you have to pull the plug. So it is a process, so it's not all-in, but order of magnitude, you know, something on the vicinity of maybe half a million dollars, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, that small expansion, all right? Um, but you gotta kind of go if you're gonna go. Otherwise, you're gonna run airspace, you're gonna be building that same transfer station, all right? The other option is what I'll call go big, that's the big expansion, all right? Same thing happens. We're looking at a lot larger footprint, and we're really maybe putting a footprint on the map that's a lot longer timeframe than eight or ten years. You may go from, we got a lined acre, a lined landfill of thirty acres, we're going, that small expansion's fifteen. The big expansion is thirty acres lined, it may be fifty or seventy new acres. So now you're gonna square up a hundred-acre footprint, all right? Now we're talking some pretty large airspace, long timeframe, all right? Now, one thing I will mention, I did the left-hand lined footprint, right-hand unlined. One of the things that the big expansion would do is it would take that unlined unit, excavate it over time, probably a twenty-year timeframe, and we would put that old waste over a lined unit. Obviously, there's some benefits to that, right? It's expensive, we're digging up old waste, but we're putting it over a lined unit and we're removing an environmental liability. The unlined unit, like all unlined units for the most part, is leaking into the groundwater, and we're monitoring the corrective action, okay? Um, so there's a benefit there, an environmental benefit, to gobble it up and put it overlying. But you're going big, and you're going with maybe a seventy to a hundred-acre footprint. Over time, you don't build it all at once, and you've got some longevity, maybe the opportunity to take waste from other areas, maybe not, completely up to the community's decision, but you get to make that decision. Now, you're thinking, well, he's going from fifteen acres to seventy acres, I bet you that's five times the permitting cost. It's not, it's maybe ten or fifteen percent more. It may be a three hundred fifty, a four hundred thousand dollar permit cost to a five hundred thousand dollar permit cost. So the economies are scaled, if you wanted to go expansion-wise, I would tell you to go big. Go ahead and get some value for your money, and go ahead and get a bigger footprint for the long-term viability of the site. But the timeframe's the same, really, you're gonna do the same studies at the same time, but we gotta get pretty serious about going sometime here before June-ish timeframe. Otherwise, it just physically won't be enough time to do it, permit and construct it. Now, in option expansion small, expansion big, we're not closing the lined landfill. We're keeping that money in our pocket for closure, post-closure, we're staying in the business. Um, if you're closing, you know, fill it up, close and go, you're going ahead and incurring that liability now. So at a real high level, that's really kind of the basis of what, you know, the community and, um, you're gonna be asked to decide is which way do we go, um, anything?
So, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, you sat in on about an hour-long meeting prior to this, and I've sat in one with our folks at the city. I think Michael did just what he said, he gave you the five thousand foot view. Uh, there's some moving parts and pieces that this board really needs to understand in the difference of, you know, what happens if we close, what happens if we mothball, what happens if we... What's the advantages of building a big, uh, bigger footprint? What's the disadvantages of building a bigger footprint? Uh, what that means to the community? And you've sat in an hour-long meeting, you know we can't cover it tonight in the amount of time we've got. So, I mean, staff's recommendation is that we get Michael back in here for a work session that just covers the landfill. Uh, now that you've got that brief overview, and some of us have an hour-long interview, we can begin to have some discussions. I talked to Emily before the meeting, she and I are gonna get together tomorrow, so I can talk to her about some of the stuff we talked about today. But, uh, I mean, I think unless you've got direct questions from Michael tonight, uh, I mean, sooner rather than later, we need to schedule a time for him to come back and, uh, and just have a work session with, talking about nothing but what we're gonna do about the landfill and what to store it.
Any questions?
I got one.
Commissioner Wood?
Uh, I'm open for, I know this is a very detailed discussion, but I would like to know when we meet, what true funds do we have that are sitting there reserved to close down a landfill to maintain, if we closed it, to maintain it for the years needed? And, you know?
Mr. Board, in the opposite, and I think, you know, not, I mean, I don't know that tonight's the time to do that, but he's prepared to answer those questions, aren't he, Larry?
Yeah, uh, right now, we have...
No, I don't need a night.
Well, it can just take a few minutes. It's just a...
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, uh, we have eight point three million dollars in financial assurance for post-closure.
Is that a reserve account?
Yes, and it's with the Alamonian Barnes.
Eight point three?
Yeah, eight point three. And over the years, we have set aside funds for a future expansion or additional financial assurance, and we have five point four million dollars sitting there. So the eight point three for the closure, and then the five point four million for future expansion or financial assurance, or whatever it needs.
Now, you say expansion or financial assurance, tell me what that is. I know what expansion is, what's the insurance part?
Okay, that's for post-closure. Yeah, that's the eight point three million dollars.
So we got thirteen point seven million dollars.
Right, yeah. But the eight point three is for closure and land deals.
So I think the answer, maybe the answer question, tell me if I'm wrong, but so let's not decide that we needed, we decided we needed to close the landfill. Then that expansion money would also become closure money, and it would all go towards closure. But if we expand the footprint of the landfill, then we're not closing it, right? So then we got eight point three in closure, post-closure money, and that other money becomes the money that we expand the current footprint with.
Right, right, but five point four million, you have options on here, but eight point three million is for closure.
Yeah, now, you're right, and I think that, I don't know that eight point three would close it, but with the eight point three and the five point four, if we close it right now, we'd get real close to, closer to that number. And I don't know exactly right now.
I just like...
So that's why I said that I think we need to have a hour-long meeting, and the folks from the city are willing to come back and be part of that discussion. Uh, it's just, I don't want to bombard you with a whole lot of information tonight, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and, uh, and, you know, we've got a...
I just like true money.
Yeah, we got, yes, so, I mean...
Just need something to play with in the system.
Well, there's two, there's two things that we're talking about here. There's a political decision about bringing waste into the community, keeping waste in the community, and then there's a business decision about how we move forward with dealing with that, because it is a dollar and cent business. It's run like a business, it's run like an enterprise fund, so there's got to be some discussions about what makes sense moving forward. And y'all have to really understand that to be able to make a good vetted decision. And that's why I think Mike needs to come back, and we need to get Larry. I mean, he's run the numbers and he's provided those, so, uh, he told you what those numbers are. So, you know, as we look at making these choices, then you start plugging those numbers into the different scenarios, and you know what we got, what it's gonna cost, those kind of things. And I just think, you know, having Mr. Stubbs back down and maybe the folks from the city over here to meet with that would be much more beneficial to trying to rush to a decision tonight when you've got some, you need a little time.
A lot.
Yeah, as far as the eight point three, being adequate for post-closure, we report those numbers to the state, and they check our ratios and everything, and those meet their requirements, so we do that every year.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
So, any more questions from Mike?
Really, I completely wouldn't miss. I should say on option one or option two, the landfill footprint would most likely be located on land you already own, roughly the two hundred and seventy-eight acres or so that you own. However, if you do expand, you're definitely gonna need additional land, not for footprint, but for soil, borrowed, the life of a landfill, is they need, they need access to reliable clay soil, and so that you would have to acquire additional property to bring...
Coverdirt.
Coverdirt, thank you, and clay in, but the footprint right now as a vision would be on land currently, and I believe is probably industrial, so...
Any other questions from Mike? All right, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you. Tony, has everybody signed this signing sheet? Everybody?
We got a signing sheet for that.
Does everybody need to sign, or just, everybody doesn't need to sign that?
I think it's the public hearing.
Yeah, it's for the public hearing, folks to come up and talk about that. Uh, Mike, I'll give you a call to try to work our schedule, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Call you Mark anyway?
All right, we're at item four, um, the agenda, items that will be added to the agenda. I understand we do have one item that needs to be added.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, as we have discussed, um, we need to add, um, it'll be item, we add one of the item one...
Eight point three.
Eight point three, and it'll be property acquisition.
I have a motion to add property acquisitions to the regular agenda.
Similar.
Second.
Second.
Add property acquisition.
Oh, uh, Commissioner Wood, I'm sorry.
All in favor? All right, we look at our minutes from workshop session on January third. Executive session on January the third, and record session, uh, and record session on January the ninth. We have a motion to accept these minutes. I make a motion to accept the minutes that's presented. We have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Stubbs, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right, we're to the public hearing section of the agenda, six point one, the comprehensive plan update transmittal. Mr. Loretta Hilton will come speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here tonight just for the transmittal of comp plan to the Department of Community Affairs. Um, once we transmit it, um, we get back, sometimes they send stuff, extra things that they want to have in the plan, and between now and then, you may have something else that you want in there. Um, but this is for the transmittal only, and then once, um, it's approved by DCA to move forward, um, I will come back to you for adoption, and all you will have required to do at that time is a signed resolution. Um, but I do want, um, to, um, reiterate that this is a working document. Um, you will be required to use this comp plan. Um, anytime you're making decisions on projects that are listed in this comp plan, you always need to pull it. Don't keep it on the shelf, it needs to be used for your projects, it needs to be used for rezoners. Um, anytime you have a rezoning that includes your current comp plan, you have to look at your comp plan and see what that area is designated for. Um, you have to make sure that it meets the character areas for any rezoner. Um, and to, in order to approve the rezoning according to the, um, Georgia Zoning Act, you have to, um, you have to answer a question whether or not it is consistent with the comp plan. So this is, like I said, a working document. Um, you wanna make sure that you have all your projects in it for the next five years, especially if you're one to be applying for a CDDG grant or anything, any type of grant that's required to be in your comprehensive plan. Uh, we can amend it at any time if you don't have something in there that needs replacing or legged gate, if you have a project that comes up, um, but you can always amend it for that. But, um, look at it, make sure that your project's set to work when you're in the next time you're there, so that way you don't have to come back before you can amend that.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that, uh, the update, we have copies of it here and at each of the cities and at www.southernstgrc.us. So if anybody wants to go look at it, it's there, uh, for reviewing, as Loretta just said. Uh, we've still got a few steps to go through here, so there's time for additional, you know, changes to be made if that's necessary.
Okay. Do we need a vote for it or do we have a transmitter or a...?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing first and plug that in.
Mr. Ryle?
Yes, um, we appreciate it, we're going to, the process for our comprehensive plan requires you to have a public hearing on every decision that's made. It's been a lot of work, it's already gone in to developing the comprehensive plan, and so really all we're doing tonight is ultimately making a decision to transmit that so it becomes part of our comprehensive document. Um, is there anyone here, I'm gonna open a public hearing, but is there anyone here that has an interest in speaking about or towards the issue of the comprehensive plan? Okay, so, so did you sign, you did not sign this? So everybody's signed their signing sheet, they're here for the second public hearing, which is on other issues out there, all right? So I just wanted, so what we'll do is, I'll just let you state your name on the record and when I open the public hearing, then we'll be good to go, all right? Uh, we consider the public hearing open at this time, and if anybody from the audience wants to speak to that issue, please come.
Julie Lester, one thirty-nine mil rate circle. Really, I just wanna thank Loretta for her hard work on this. Um, I went to those meetings, I know how hard it is sometimes to, like, wrangle us, and I know Mr. Davis, and I know some of the commissioners at some of the meetings, other members of the community. So really, it's just a thank you for all the hard work that goes into it. But I do wanna reiterate what she said, y'all know this, that it's very important when we're making our zoning decisions and planning decisions and land use decisions, to refer back to this plan for our future and make sure that we're following, um, what the vision of the community and the various stakeholders are whenever we are making these zoning decisions and land use decisions, so...
That ain't a hard question.
All right, is anyone else that would like to speak to the comprehensive plan? If not, then we'll close the public hearing and this matters to action.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the transmittal of the comprehensive plan to the CDA. Similar. Right, Commissioner Wood, movement, I'll second it, Commissioner Wood's second, and all in favor? And we come to six point two, public hearing TCZA twenty-three dash oh-one, petition being made by Mark Fletcher, owner and acting agent for a special exception to allow a solar farm, being covered at forty-one ninety-two, Georgia Highway one twenty-five north, tax amount zero zero five seven, parcel zero zero eight, the parcel's twenty-six and a half acres in its own agricultural. Mr. Chris Davis.
Good evening, Lord. First of all, I'd like to clarify, there was a change, uh, to the request made this morning. Um, they are no longer seeking twenty-six point five acres, they have downsized their footprint into a twenty-four point four acre footprint.
And that new map is in the books.
We should have a new layout of the new footprint for their project. It doesn't change location, it's changed size. They actually could get by with less land, and that's why they're trying to not approach much land if they need to, although they have to have.
And it's page forty-two in the book.
I'll give you a second just a little bit, I said it didn't change, uh, the location, it just went down in size.
Their original map is on page forty-one, and the new map is on forty-two, if you want to compare.
Just as the chairman has read, we received an application for a special exception from Mr. Mark Fletcher, the owner of property Nick Stein is his acting agent. As y'all are aware, back on September thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, we approved and adopted a very respectable, very stringent solar farm order for the family. We made it in ag-zoned areas and commercial areas, but also with a special exception attached that each one would come before the board for review. We received this application from Mr. Mark and Mr. Nick. The property is located at forty-one ninety-two Georgia Highway one twenty-five north, tax map zero zero five seven, parcel zero zero eight. Henry, sending in their application, we went ahead and gave Mr. Nick our ordinance, because there's a lot of details in there about what they have to meet, what they have to do just to get to this point, site plans, decommissioning plans. We do have their decommission plan as requested by our ordinance, we do have that on the... We do have that on file. We posted the property with a sign, we put ads in the paper. We have the Planning and Zoning Commission heard it on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The vote was a four to one vote in recommendation of approval. As you can tell, there's other solar farms in the area. According to your map, you have a packet, there's one further north, and then there's one to the west. One to the north is in the county, which is there by the church. The one that's to the west is within the city limits.
How far is the one that's to the north? It's on the same?
Same stretch of road, approximately half a mile, maybe a mile at the most. Different developer, at the time the one on same road, Georgia one twenty-five. At that time, we did not have the ordinance. Like I stated, this board adopted that ordinance September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. That solar farm was prior to that. This would be the first solar farm that we would have in here, that would have to adhere to the solar farm ordinance that you have adopted. Like I said, you know, there are specific requirements in all ordinance. Their land is zoned ag, which is one of the requirements. And then he's provided, Mr. Stein has provided all the requirements that meets our ordinance. Like I said, the planning commission is met on January twelfth, four to one, in favor of recommendation. We had the planning commission, there were a few votes there in opposition, but then there was a couple that was here as well in favor. Our office has not fielded any calls recently concerning this whole. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions from the board if you have any from us.
Any questions? So, so there's nothing in these eleven criteria that would, would say that this shouldn't be approved, in your opinion?
Uh, no, sorry. The, you know, that's, so for everybody's knowledge, the planning commission does not meet on how they feel or what they think. They meet on all the criteria of the application, meeting eleven standards. And that board sits though and goes down through each standard, and they review that themselves and make a vote. All they, every one of them, they said, met the requirement. They meet on the technical standard of the application.
And, and everything as far as we know meets the criteria for the special exception that this board put in place in September of twenty? Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Ryle?
All right, then it's time for us to open the floor for the public hearing. And so we're considering this public hearing open. And what we'll do first is we'll receive comment for anyone that's in support of special exception TC dash ZA dash twenty-three dash oh one. Does anybody just speak on behalf? Please state your name, address, please.
My name's Nick Stein, and my address is one thirty-nine Foreman Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one five. Well, that'd be it. I'll keep it, thanks, Chris, for the introduction, I'll keep it short here. Mark Fletcher, landowner here in Tipton, approached us to build a solar farm on his property. And, and that's what we're, we designed, working with Chris and Regina, have designed it per the solar ordinance, Tipton's law ordinance, and we, you know, of course, built it in the same manner, so. Unless anybody has any specific questions, I did ask Denver Braswell, chairman of the Florida Commissioners in Colco County, to, to come on our behalf today. He's obviously, can relate to you from a commissioner's standpoint, but he also is landowner for two of our solar farms in Colco County. So instead of me, of course, having a little bit of a biased opinion on why we're, you know, we'll do what we say we're gonna do, I just thought, you know, if anybody had any questions, Denver, it'd be a good person to ask.
What's the life of your solar farms?
We're, this is a thirty-year purchase contract agreement. But if you just let it sit out there, it'll probably last, we think about forty years, the equipment.
What kind of, what kind of energy or power would the project might as produce?
As far as homes or?
Yeah.
I think.
Just, just have a general idea of what, what kind of impact it'll have.
I think, you know, if you had, I can get, talk a little bit more towards it and find, you know, somebody else that I work with to give you a better answer about it, it's about ten thousand homes.
Over what period of time?
I, I, I'm not sure, I don't wanna get a little bit technical over my head with the, on the power side, but, but I'll get you there.
You have questions from the board? Do you, I understand that you're in the business of, of building solar farms. Did you have any, obviously you can tell us the pros of a solar farm, but you have any drawbacks of a solar farm of this size or anything that you can tell us about?
So we, we come in, takes about, you know, this one, we don't have to do any land work, so it'll take about six weeks on the mechanical side, six weeks on the electrical side to put it in place. We'll have about twenty tractor trailers, twenty-five tractor trucks come in, pull materials. They'll come in, drop it off. We'll have, we'll have around fifteen guys, workers, putting it together. And then, once it's installed, we'll be gone, and they'll be, you know, unless something goes wrong, which typically there's not much that goes wrong, will be like two people per year coming in to maintain it.
Anything in the, the ordinance that we have in place now regarding solar farms? Do you see anything that would be problematic down the road for this project or anything?
No, this, all the ordinance is pretty typical for Georgia, so everything's pretty similar.
So y'all have designed and built solar farms pretty much to this standard already?
Oh, yeah, a lot of them.
What's the tear down cost in thirty years?
We've got, we hired a.
Leslie, and our questions being asked, read to the board, and then if they want those redirected to him, you know, he can speak up and after y'all bring forth your, your concerns if you make those knowledge or as opposed to Q and A from the audience, okay?
Who is responsible for, for tear down, when, if and when that takes place? Is it the landowner or the company?
It's us.
It's the solar company.
Who is the solar company?
What was the answer?
We are.
Your company is the partner of the company?
Correct. And you have an escrow account or?
We're not doing that. Let him speak, and then bring, bring, let the questions be addressed to the board, and then let them ask, let them come back.
Please, I'll take care of it.
What is the name of the company?
Enem Solar. Right, E-N-M-A.
Okay, I'm sure, I've, I've read it in there, but I've read it several times. One question, the maintenance. You see so many of these solar farms that's just growed up, look like swamps, forest or something. Our regulations zoning says it's gotta be maintained on a regular basis. Would that be done?
Yeah. It'll be, I think, everywhere's a little different down here. We mow about six times, six times a year during mowing season. So I think about every three weeks it gets mowed during, during warmer months. And then, as I said, it's, I think there's about two, you know, semi-annual inspections twice a year, where they come in and if there's anything else that needs to be maintained, they'll be, they'll be.
Will the entire farm have a fence around it?
Yes, that's part, sorry, that's part of the ordinance.
The height of that fence is?
I think the NEC code is six feet, and so ours is six feet plus one foot of barbed wire, seven feet long.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Is anybody else here that would like to speak to or on behalf of this project?
Like I said, you want to say anything, or you, I mean, I know it's pretty straightforward, you're the landowner. And then, like I said, Denver's here, I might be asked to have any questions, if you don't want to buy a company on, if you'd be willing to.
Well, let's hear from those that are in opposition, and they'll probably raise some questions, and then we'll ask you to come back, okay?
Thank you very much, yes.
All right, what order would y'all like to come in?
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Griffin, I reside at forty-one sixty-five Georgia Highway one twenty-five north. I look about myself, I am pro-solar, I come to work for AT Solar to do residential solar. I have solar in my house, and I've had solar since two thousand nineteen, but I am a hundred percent opposed to this. And the reason why is because of you. I do feel like you guys put the ordinance in place to protect the county, but I feel like the main purpose of your ordinance is what's not, and again, not being looked at. So if you guys look at the purpose of your ordinance, to provide definition relating to solar systems, energy production facilities, and standards to guide development in solar energy systems and facilities in order to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and avoid significant impacts on resources and adjacent communities. Go down just a step further, encourage the location of solar production facilities to the extent possible areas where the potential adverse impacts on the community will be minimized. How will this farm minimize any adverse impacts on the town? It's directly in front of my home. This is what I look at every morning I leave the neighborhood, what I look at on my front porch every day. It's the dooka right across the street, it will be inside of their, their house. New subdivisions, they're just being built, it'll be in their side yards and in their backyards. We'll go a step further. Recycling costs, this is brought up. I've already went through this in the city, we bought this with the city, and it's on this behind our house, by the interstate. The cost to recycle a panel currently, national average, twelve to twenty-five dollars per panel. Tipton County currently has over thirty thousand panels in this county, still in buying them. The landfill cost is roughly two dollars per panel. Great that we had a landfill meeting tonight, that's definitely something to consider, we're looking at this. You guys have, will now have three farms, if this one is approved, within a five-year span, that's gonna build this landfill potential, something to consider. If you just wanna break down the cost, if you were to put those thirty thousand, thirty thousand panels that are currently in the county into the landfill, we're looking at roughly sixty thousand dollar cost on the, either business or that, that landlord, if you don't have the contracts in or out. Those panels are recycled, minimum cost, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maximum, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the current panels that are installed in this county, not including this farm. Directly, this farm will directly affect me. When I purchased my home, my wife and I chose to live there to raise our kids there. We've put a lot of money in our home to increase the value of our home. I will ask all of you on this board, would any of you wanna buy a home or be interested in a home that has solar grifting under? This will directly affect home value, my home value, because it's not gonna be near as appealing to a potential homeowner. Definitely something to consider. Just to kind of recap on some of the questions that you guys asked him, I know a little, I've done my homework a little bit better. Decrease home values, drawbacks, I believe that's your question, drawbacks, decrease home values around us, I saw it. How many of you wanna wake up every day and ask what you look at? Recycling costs, tear down costs, yes, company may pay for it, we're gonna house that. Landfill issues, we already had them, lost revenue. Look at what's being built currently right beside that property. How much more money can this kind of make by homes being built there versus landlocked in that property for the next thirty to forty years? Mowing every three weeks, I would love to see that or not, because I lived by the car farm and have lived there since the farm's been built, they mow maybe three to four times a year. I understand that this policy was not in place in that farmer's building, it is in place now. And I do feel like there's a lot of issues in this policy that we didn't address, or didn't do. For instance, Mr. Davis, when I approached Mr. Davis before the first meeting, I asked for a copy of this, they provided a copy. I also asked for a copy of what products he was using, what trackers were being used, and other products, so I could properly research and warranty that those products, so I can bring it to the board or not, just like I did with the city. I have a copy of what I took to the city on their meeting, I'd be more than happy to do that research. Most trackers have a five to ten year warranty. For all of you that live near me, you can see the car farm, how many months do those trackers sit there brooming and not operate properly? That's an I SOR for everybody that lives around it. I live around it, I drive by daily, and many of you do that. Definitely ask you guys to take this into consideration if you guys are making your decision tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin.
Hi, I'm Emma Summers, I'm speaking on behalf of Accelerated Builders today. I'm the daughter of Eric Summers and the niece of Fred Carla, they're the owners of Accelerated Builders. And I got a statement from them that I'm gonna read to y'all right now. Accelerated Builders is a general contractor in Tipton specializing in building residential subdivisions and homes. The company has had a significant impact on the global economy over the years. Last year alone, Accelerated Builders made a notable contribution to the base of the tax base in excess of seven million dollars. With this being said, Accelerated Builders would like the committee to consider this opinion before making a final decision on a solar farm on Highway one twenty-five. In our opinion, the solar farm can be viewed from the northern parts, most parts of our subdivision, designed for the future. This will be very close to newly finished homes and take away from the beauty of the neighborhood that we have worked so hard to create. This solar farm may produce excessive noise from the operation of its equipment and can be dangerous for children that may be curious and want to explore that area. We believe the installation of a solar farm in close proximity to a residential neighborhood carries unnecessary risks and potential negative outcomes. Residents should not be subjected to the potential of their homes being negatively affected, disturbed by noise, or even worse, the safety of their children being at risk. In fact, we believe the installation of the solar farms in close proximity to residential neighborhoods should be avoided altogether. Philly Chase Subdivision has put in a considerable investment of time, energy, and money in the creation of beautiful homes within the boundaries of its first and second phases. To safeguard this investment, solar farms should not be located in the area to residential, residential neighborhoods, and such should not be allowed near the proposed phase three. Although solar farms are beneficial to the environment and offer sustainable energy options, their operation and presence should not interfere with the quality of life of those near our residential neighborhoods. For this reason, Accelerated Builders will oppose the installation of a solar farm near their proposed future project phase three.
Thanks. Next?
Justin Beck, I live at Seventy Waterfront in Tipton County, just north of Brighton Road, on, on one twenty-five and Brighton Road. I've seen massive solar farms built throughout the state. They're certainly in abundance, and I think that they're fantastic. I think that the right place, the right location, it probably makes a lot of sense. And a lot of those areas are very rural, where there's really nothing else around there that would be detraction, a detraction. And so I think this proposed location, though, because it is so trafficked, it's so, I mean, there's a lot of development going along that route right there, as well as the current homes that are already in place. It seems that this is not the ideal location to build one of these farms. Now, I did have a sneak peek at the plan, and it sounds like there's a two acre that's not going to be used in the, or necessary for the plan. And looking on the map, you've seen that two acres is to the back of the property. I don't know if there's a compromise that can be made to, to put the farm there, but leave those front two acres, let that be developed into something beautiful, and, and behind that have more of that solar thing that takes place. They're not, I guess they're designing the fence, but this is prison style fencing, chain link with barbed wire. It does not look good, it does not provide any beautification to it. There could be an improvement into the fencing that goes around such a structure. All the transmission equipment, as we see the ones to the north, is located right on the road. And so the upkeep, which again, if I mowed my lawn every three, three weeks, or three months, or whatever the number is, I'd be kicked out of the neighborhood. This should be kicked out of the neighborhood as well. Unless there are something, there's something because of its proximity to town, to where people are living and others that have expressed their concerns, especially this gentleman that lived right across the street, it shouldn't be there. There's plenty of other alternatives, better locations suited for such a, such a project that ultimately is an I SOR, and there doesn't seem to be a way around it.
Thank you. Next?
I just kind of had some, I'm Shane, I have some, I live from Mr. Beck, I just, you know.
What's your address?
All of this.
What's your address?
Thirty-six Long Island Road. All of this is kind of new to me, but I'm just wondering, in the, in the ordinance, is it? does it give you guys the right to deny the application? Can y'all have that right? Just because they meet criteria, do you have to grant it?
It's a form of a special exception, that's why you have a public hearing to get input from the community to evaluate those, and balance and evaluate those various interests.
I mean, you guys can deny the application.
Right.
I mean, so you're sitting here, and there's got to be some, you know, in my mind, some reason why it makes sense, other than somebody's looking to make some money. And that's what this is about, if someone get twisted. Somebody's gonna make money off this gentleman drove down from Atlanta. And maybe it makes sense, I don't know. He's not here for his well-being, but it's about money. And these things are everywhere, and they're encroaching, you know, I don't know how I feel about it, but just my eyes tell me this is getting a, a little long in the tooth. We're seeing these things pop up everywhere. And at the end of this, when these things are popping up everywhere, somebody's gonna lose money. And then somebody's gonna be left holding the bag. It may not be this guy back here, his company may be great. But in my experience, when somebody's left holding the bag, those guys are gone. And it's us holding it. And all these costs that we're talking about, that's gonna be us encarnating. And then it looks like crap. So now we got eyesores all over the place. And I don't know that this is the place to stop it. But at some point, we gotta stop it, or otherwise all our land's gonna have this stuff all over. And that's the reason why we are what we are. We're not the feet people in Atlanta, or wherever all these things are. Why do you think he's driving all the way down here to put a solar panel out in the country? Because he can do it here, he can't do it up there, or he'd be building it in Atlanta. Land's cheap here, they get tax incentives to do all these things. So they're taking our land that we grow stuff on, to put this crap on. I don't know, listen, I'm all for making money, don't get me wrong. That's what this reeks of. And the point is, at some point, we gotta stop. Where does it go? And, you know, maybe this isn't the time to stop it. I don't have that answer. It just feels uncomfortable when we have people who are, you know, building houses, building their lives around what's around them. And now we're putting up chain-linked fence. I guarantee you, nobody in this room wants that outside their house. And that should mean something. It just really should. And, you know, maybe it shouldn't always be about money. I don't know. What's the, do y'all know what the county's getting out of this? Like, are we getting the power?
No.
Huh?
No. This power can go anywhere in the state.
Yeah, so like, what are we doing it for? What's the point? Do y'all know if we're getting power? Or do we know we're not getting the power? Is it gonna help anybody in the county?
Go ahead.
Power sold back to the power company, make a pull, power's sold to the place. So power comes, you put this stuff on the land, it used to be beautiful land, it goes to some power company, who makes that money? It ain't us. But we're gonna be holding the bag in the day. And, you know, you guys are the face of our county, and we put our trust in you, you're our elected officials. You know, at some point, y'all are the guys that gotta go, okay, this is getting a little out of hand. It feels that way to me, 'cause where I see them everywhere. Um, I just appreciate your time, and what you do for us.
How y'all doing? I'm Jordan Foke, fifty-six water front, uh, Tipton, Georgia, three one seven nine four. I spoke at the last, uh, preliminary meeting, and, um, like I said, I think all of us in this room is kinda jealous that we don't own this land. And this is like striking gold in South Georgia. If you have land that you can, you know, be under this power line. Um, but with that being said, every, I'm, all I'm doing is kinda struggling back on what everybody said here. Real fast, when we sold, I, I've sold several Dollar Generals in this town. I made money. It happened, you know, but we have one right across the street from our office, right? And we, we were, we came in here, we were against it, didn't want it to happen. And they looked to us in our face and said, we're different. This isn't gonna be like the rest of the Dollar Generals. We mow our grass every week. We, we won't have stuff selling on the curb. Well, it's happening. And who, no, nobody here is making them abide by the rules that they sat here and told us that it's going to happen on. This is another Dollar General in my eyes, going where it shouldn't, it should not be going. Whenever new doctors come into town and new administration and new nurses, uh, anybody coming with a hospital, which is, which is the heartbeat of our, our town, I get, I get the privilege of being able to show them Tipton. And right now, we have other issues at hand with the solar, the solar farm. We have a homeless situation that we're dealing with. We have Dollar Generals that aren't cleaning up the parking lots, and there's trash everywhere. And I'm having to dodge all this stuff while I give them an hour and a half community tour twice a week, uh, for what the hospital's doing here. To me, it's a slap in the face. It's Tipton, you know, for us trying to get new industry here. When COVID called a game, if Eric, if Eric Summers and, and Fred had not had their, their subdivisions here, we would not be able to handle the employees that they brought here. If, if that subdivision alone, there and out there at the Cove at Willow Creek, if we did not have that, we would not be able to house the people that came here and filled up three hundred and fifty jobs that they brought with them. And Eric and Fred took a leap of faith, not only just him, there's a thousand of the builders in this town, but they took a leap of faith, and they came and, and are trying to build nice subdivisions, and they're, and they're making it look good. They're not just throwing up cookie cutter homes. So at the end of the day, we've gotta stop it somewhere, because if, if we agree to allow this place here, and it, and if they abide by all the rules, and this is the special stuff, and they said they're gonna do everything, that's fine. But if we agree to this one, then these fields wrap all the way down, under these narrow lines, all the way down Brighton Road, we can't say no to anymore. If you agree to this one, we can't say no to the next one. And then they're gonna continue to be completely surrounding Tipton, what we know as the homeless solar power capital of the world, in my eyes. Anyway, thank you.
Scott Schaubert, seventy-four Long Pine, here in Tipton. And I guess I have questions. What, and it tails into what Shane said, what mechanism does the county have to ensure that the builder, who says he is going to be responsible for the cleanup in thirty years, has the money set aside in thirty years? What mechanism do y'all have to ensure that money's there? Or are you gonna come to me and ask me to pay taxes? You got, you got an account for the, uh, landfill? Eight point three million and five point four, did I ever say? Good, we need that. What mechanism is there to clean up this if he's not in business? Or if he is in business, are you checking his books to see he's got an escrow account that says, Tipton County plot number five, I've got X number of dollars to clean this up in thirty years set aside? Who's gonna monitor that? What mechanism do y'all have? Here's a question, I'm just looking for an answer. You have one? And if he goes out of business, who pays? Does he have deposit money into the Tipton County budget every year? So much, a thousand dollars or a hundred dollars for thirty years to make sure there's a cleanup fund there when he's gone?